Hello, everyone, and welcome to FYI Oxbridge. I'm your host Barry Giles, station manager here at Oxbridge Community Television. FYI Oxbridge is a program about the people, places, and events that are happening here in our town of Oxbridge. And today, my guest is Ben Sherman, the Director of the Department for Public Works. Ben, finally got you in here.
Finally. It's been many years.
So today, we're just going to talk about the warrant articles pertaining to the Department of Public Works for the May 14th Town Meeting, which is happening at Valley Chapel, 7:00 PM, 14 Hunter Road here in Oxbridge. Just reminding everybody, please come out and vote for some articles, and our main one being the budget, of course, and show your support for the town. So Ben, let's jump right into it. Why don't we go right to Article 14, which is Borrowing Authorization for Blackstone Water Treatment Plant, Department of Public Works?
Sure. So the general flavor of this article is just that, it's a borrowing authorization. And the reason we need that, well, actually, let me back up. I'll give you a little background. So for a number of years now, we've been working with our consultants, we've been working with the Water and Sewer Commissioners on everything capital, all the capital needs for the enterprise funds, both water and sewer. Included in that were a number of projects that we had developed through our master planning process. And in particular, what we're here to talk about today is some treatment requirements that we have. These treatment requirements are being driven by regulatory needs, both at the state level and at the federal level. Currently, the town of Oxbridge does not treat our water in the true sense of the word "treatment." We add chemicals for various reasons, to adjust pH, to help us just put out a better quality of water. But as far as treatment, we're not necessarily treating for certain parameters. As a result of these regulatory changes, we are now having to address these various parameters. The two main things that we're focusing on in the water quality standards are iron and manganese in the water. Those are the, most people would see like the manganese. Manganese is a lot stronger here. Naturally occurring element, very prevalent in New England. If you have any rust staining, dark purple to black staining, that's the manganese that naturally comes out in the groundwater. We are, we have one well out right now. We've had that out, well number one at Blackstone Street. We've had out of service since 2014 due to high manganese levels. So the direction then was to take that out of service. The other wells are below the limits. And unfortunately, the limits are always changing, like they're gradually getting tighter and tighter. So this is something we've been trying to plan on for a while, and now we are here. In conjunction with that, there are another family of chemicals called PFAS. It's an acronym, leave it up to the government, it's an acronym, polyfluoroalkylized substances. It's a family of chemicals, a very long list of chemicals for that matter, been around for a very long time. You're seeing more and more of the term PFAS being used in the news across the nation. A lot of people are addressing those. They're also known as the forever chemicals. You know, they were, they came about, I think it was in roughly the early 60s. Teflon was a good one. Obviously, a very good product. Unfortunately, it's right now, it is, they are unable to break that chemical chain down to basically get rid of it. So hence the forever chemical designation. We are looking at PFAS in our water system. Reports are saying that in the world today, it's in 98% of the living organisms on this planet. So we're not immune to this. We are obviously moving something forward with this article, and we're looking to take it out of our drinking water. So when we talk about the drinking water system, for those that don't know, town of Oxbridge here has three wellfields. They're not geographically, they're not geographically located such that they're right next to each other. We have our Blackstone Street wellfield over on Blackstone Street, of course. We have our Burnett wellfield, which is located behind the old Burnett Mill along the Blackstone River. And then we have our newest wellfield, which is down by the high school, which is our Rosenfeld wellfield. So we have three separate wellfields, total of seven wells. And we've been sampling for PFAS-related chemicals since 2022. Massachusetts promulgated their regulations, which established the water quality standard. So in general, without going into too much of the detail, we've been sampling for those. We've been monitoring that, actually before the regulations went into effect, through programs with DEP. Actually, DEP had driven that initial sampling requirement that a lot of communities in Oxbridge took part of. And based on that, that established our sampling program as we went forward to where we're at now. But we do have, at our Blackstone Street wellfield, we have, well number two had technically exceeded the maximum contaminant level set by DEP. And again, there's some, there's some interesting, when you talk again PFAS, and especially in Massachusetts, the regulations look at a total of six of these many chemicals, and they call it PFAS six. So it's the cumulative result of these PFAS six elements. If you exceed 10 parts per trillion, which is the limit, and that's another tough thing for people to understand and to kind of feel.
Visualize.
It's a very difficult thing. I mean, the closest thing, and I don't even know if it's essentially true, but think of a small grain of salt in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, you know, as maybe some type of comparison for a part per trillion. It's very small. I mean, we're essentially down at limits of technology to actually discover it. But that being said, anything over 10 puts you into a different sampling schedule, which is monthly versus quarterly. And then if you exceed the water quality standard of 20, then you're violating the water quality standards and would be then pushed into a process with DEP, which requires you to go through a consent order. And you know, you're legally bound to then, you know, move things forward to address the issue. So technically, we are exceeding the one at well number two. However, before the regulations went into effect at the direction of DEP, one of the options that we are doing in the short term is blending. And when I say blending, just that. We're taking the water we're pumping out of well number two and well number three, and you're mixing that together to basically yield a lower result. That has been something we've been doing for all that, now the last two-plus years. And DEP has directed us, we go back a few months, has directed us to, you know, the needing to move something forward to address this. That was the short term, what we need to do a long term. So in general, the long-term goal here is to design permit and construct a water treatment facility at the Blackstone Street wellfield. And that will help us twofold. I mentioned the iron and manganese, but also the PFAS. So it's a treatment plant to address, you know, all of those elements, in addition to upgrading the facility. I mean, that's another aspect that I think people don't necessarily understand in what we've talked about in various meetings, is that Blackstone Street is the, we'll say that's the oldest piece of our water system. You know, there's portions of that facility that are in excess of 100 years old, part of the original water system. You know, while it is in very good shape, as you know, as most people would think, you know, looking at it from the exterior, I mean, it seems some wear and tear. My water staff, they take good care of it. I mean, it meets all of our standards, but there's a life cycle to it. So in the broad discussion of this article, it's not just building a building to house treatment processes and treating the water. It's a complete upgrade of the facility, including the three wells that are on that site. So that together make up the general discussion around this article.
Okay. And looks like the board had a favorable action of 5-0-0 on that, which is good. All right, let's jump right into Article 15, another borrowing, borrowing authorization of Burnett Wells Phase II Construction.
Sure. So here we are again, you know, with the water enterprise. Again, both water and wastewater are separate enterprise funds within the structure of the town of Oxbridge. And what does that mean? That means they're governed by the ratepayers. They, you know, the rates that we, you know, that we set and the revenue that we receive from the water and sewer usage goes directly to the water and sewer enterprise funds. The project in particular, the Burnett wellfield, was the one that I mentioned previously, located right in the center of town. Those wells are pretty old, too. They were actually acquired from the old Burnett Mill complex. And they, you know, those structures out there are aged and have seen better days for, I would say, the last five, pre-COVID, I have to kind of remember my calendar schedule here, but pre-COVID, we'll say, you know, for the last five, six years, we've been working on, ever since we updated our master plan for the water system, which was a hydraulic update and a master plan of projects and where we see the needs for the division to go. One of the things included sources. And for that, we have three wells located at the Burnett wellfield, four, five, and six. Again, they're aged, they're very tired. They have been retrofitted to the brink of, we can't retrofit them anymore. And in general, when I say they've been retrofitted, if you can imagine, these are groundwater wells, so you have a casing that goes down into the ground. When it was first put in, it was of a certain size. And over time, you know, that naturally degrades. And one of the ways to fix that is you would sleeve it with another one. And so over time, if you can imagine something that was started out like this, it becomes something like this. So you look at everything from decreased, you know, production capacity to just your ability to get the needed water that you want to get out to the users. So that being said, we worked with the engineers, we've worked with the water sewer commissioners to redevelop these sources. And the approach that we took was to do sister wells or replacement wells. And there's a, there's some distinction there when you talk to certain people of what that means. They're not new sources. We are literally punching a new well in very close proximity to the existing one. It helps us with permitting. Otherwise, you're into a whole very lengthy permitting process for a new source. That being said, we, the Department of Public Works, have been fortunate to be able to utilize the bulk of the ARPA funding that we received, American Rescue Plan funds. And we've been putting that towards a variety of water and sewer projects. It's been a blessing, I'll just say that. And we try to make sure that we let the public know. Many meetings, we talk about how much money, I mean, we're spending, you know, at the very end of this, we'll be spending upwards of $4 million that aren't, that's not going to be borne by the ratepayers. So I can't stress that enough, that, you know, how important that is, that the use of the ARPA funds is helping us do so many things that we've been unable to do, you know. You'll hear things like shovel-ready, having a shovel-ready project. Well, we're, we have difficulty getting there because you have to get funding approved to get designed, to get something ready to go to construction. And we're taking this opportunity to do just that. So on this article, we started, it was a two-phase project, one to drill the wells at both Burnett and Blackstone, by the way. And I'm going to kind of cross discussion topics because we ultimately kind of get blended back into Blackstone Street. But Phase one was the design and permitting with Mass DEP for the new wells. So again, you know, generically speaking, that's installing new casings and getting it ready for all the internal components to be able to pump the water out. We've, we are at about, I think, I'd say 95% complete with all six wells, both Blackstone and Burnett. The, so the wells are all going to be completely done and ready to go. I'm going to hop over to Blackstone Street, the previous article. Part of what I was saying there, it's not just the building of this one building, construction of the one building, it's an overall improvement to the site. The Phase II part that we're talking about specifically for Burnett is, at Blackstone Street, is part of the Blackstone Street authorization. So now coming back to Burnett. So wells are drilled, they're currently drilled right now. And based on the engineering that we had done, and again, we, I can't stress enough either, it's hard to, hard to imagine how old some of this infrastructure is until you get into it. And, you know, a lot of times, you have to dig some holes to really make some determinations. So what, you know, there were some, there were some assumptions that were made early on, on, you know, what we were going to need to do to complete Phase II. Once we got through that design and permitting phase, and unfortunately, we had to jump a few more hurdles through the permitting process with Mass DEP, you know, we discovered that, and it's not a surprise, I guess, you know, you look back on it, hindsight being 2020, it wasn't a surprise that the electrical infrastructure just was not up to par for today's standards, you know. You know, while it does function right now, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't meet the current code requirements. And, you know, with the upgrade, we've now, you know, with these new wells, we have, we got a higher, we're back at our original capacity, you know, for withdrawal. So new pumps and new infrastructure, new electrical demands or increased electrical demands is requiring us to do more work. And then the big, the big piece here that is really driving this, because we were hoping to do this all through the ARPA funding, but unfortunately, since COVID, supply chain issues, just the cost of parts and materials and supplies, in this case, a lot of electrical computer, you know, various computer components that are involved with the, you know, the infrastructure that we have, lead times, everything has gotten so much more expensive. So we are unable to do it within the limitations of the ARPA funding. So this article is to supplement that, and it's a separate borrowing that will be, you know, paid for, just like the first one there for the wastewater treatment, or water treatment plant, that will be part of and built into the rates going forward. Again, collectively bringing these two articles together, this is something that we've planned for. I know it's a surprise to many. However, we have been planning for this, and we've been, you know, having these discussions with the water sewer commissioners through our rate model, our rate-setting process. We have a very dynamic process that we go through. And the nice thing about that is we can look at the future. While it, you know, there are impacts to the rates as we go forward, but it helps us better plan. So it's something we've been planning for. And in order to complete it, we need this borrowing authorization. And then finally, in conjunction with Article 14, hopefully, we'll get a favorable vote at Town Meeting to move that forward. I think it's important to note, again, I apologize for kind of jumping back and forth, but they're so closely tied together. Another little background piece on Article 14, the treatment plant. Again, we've been, we've been working and talking with Mass DEP on this for quite some time. For the public, if they recall, back in the fall, we got authorization, the Water Division got authorization, and we transferred money from retained earnings to fund a pilot study. The pilot study was just that. It's a pilot study for us to evaluate treatment technologies to address site-specific needs at Blackstone Street. And that is ongoing. We are probably maybe 60% done with that process. It's a required process to move forward in design. It's something that Mass DEP requires. So we are actively working on this. And again, this is kind of like laying the foundation to get into where, to get to where we are at. All this collectively together, and given the importance and the timing is a key element here. Obviously, again, I'll start talking about PFAS again. It is a hot-button topic, and there's a lot of money, infrastructure money, all the way from the Biden infrastructure law, all the way down to, you know, state, you know, DEP monies, that are being funneled into addressing these issues. So all that collectively, we started the process last August. We applied for funding for this project through the State Revolving Fund, the SRF program, as we like to call it. And that is the fund or the program that the state uses for both drinking water and clean water projects. We used it on the wastewater treatment plant. So it's the source of funding that, you know, most communities get. It's a competitive program based on the needs and those types of things. So we applied for that. With the PFAS element to it, there is 0% financing. What does that mean? It's basically, we're getting 0% in a loan. Also with the PFAS, there is a component of it that, based on the tier, they, there's some formula, formula that you go through that establishes what tier you fall in. And right now, I believe we're solidly in the Tier One, which equates to a certain percentage, although they haven't finalized it yet, but there's a certain percentage. And I think we could be anywhere from maybe 5% to maybe as high as 10% in principal forgiveness. So that I equate to free money, right? It's not a loan, it's, they're going to take that percentage right off the top, and you're not going to have to pay that back. So we started that process. We were preliminarily approved by the end of the calendar year. So in January, we were, we were told we were on the, what they call the draft intended use plan, which, you're on the plan at that point. They're just finalizing the plan itself. And we have been notified since, I think it was late, late February, we got notification that here, you're on the final plan. All that then starts the ball rolling officially, which is the reason why we have this Article 14, because once you're on the plan, the timing of it could happen before you're on the plan. Some people will try to get an authorization beforehand, but in this case, you know, we made sure we were into the program. So in order to keep the process moving, it's very schedule-driven. So the first thing we have to do is we have to get a borrowing authorization, an authorization from the town, whatever the governing agency is, in our case, it's Town Meeting, that says, yes, you can borrow that amount of money from that. And that, so we have that on this Town Meeting. Following that, and again, I have some more information that we can talk about later, is you then go into the next phase where you have to apply again for the formal application and the, you know, you enter an agreement, into an agreement with DEP. And the Clean Water Trust, they administer all this money. And that kind of gets the monetary piece going. But this is the, while it's mid, it's kind of midstream for us, it's really the first critical element or critical piece to the schedule to make sure that we would ultimately hit a milestone deadline of June of 2025 to have a contract awarded for construction. So that was kind of a long, drawn-out, you know, discussion.
There are many, many steps.
Yep.
To get from point A to point B. But one of the most important ones is to show the federal government that they're willing to borrow the money to move forward and get this going.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, call it a commitment, like that's your commitment.
Exactly.
And then at that point, you're then in the process of developing the contracts with the, with the state and the Clean Water Trust for the money.
That's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. But at the same time, a little bit different from the wastewater treatment plant when we did it, although there was some 0%, it just shows how these programs change over time. We are hopefully going to be fortunate to be in early on this process because the regulatory climate and the funding climate, you know, trying to project that into the future, it's, you just don't know what's going to happen. So, you know, I am hopeful by getting in early, we are going to, we're going to see a much bigger return on that as far as what those, what those costs are going to be. Not to say that, you know, if we, I mean, I hope we move this forward, but you just don't know what that climate's going to look like later on, or if the program is going to be as robust as it is now. So, you know, timing is, I think, on our side. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's happened too often for us in Oxbridge. But I think with, with the things that we've done to date and the relationships that we've, we've established with our regulators, you know, again, going back to the wastewater treatment, I think it's really helped us because we've, we have a very good communication line with DEP, and it's proved to be beneficial to date.
That's good. Great. All right, moving on to Article 18, appropriation for high-street area drainage improvement.
So yeah, this is, this is another, you know, a unique one. You know, there are probably some out there that are familiar with this. We started a project a few years back where we were looking at two areas of town where we've had some issues. And I'll go back to, I believe it was, again, my, my calendar, internal calendar is a little off. It was either 2017, 2018. And everybody can agree, we've had some very unique events, rainfall events, later in the, in the summer, early fall. And we have areas of town with very old drainage. The age of the drainage isn't the problem, it's the development that has occurred since that drainage was originally constructed. So it took a while, I'll admit, it wasn't a very fast process, but we were able to do a drainage study. Obviously, it's kind of the first step. What, we have to analyze and evaluate the area in question. And we looked at two different areas. We looked at, we'll call it the high-street, South Main Street area. So for those here in town, let's say, up High Street, as far as roughly, I completely, I completely blanked myself, so I apologize. It's a ways, it's a ways up, it's beyond Carney Street. And so the drainage area, that whole section of town, comes down High Street, it comes down South Main Street, and it ultimately goes through the new parking lot right across from the fire station. Obviously, there are some deficiencies along the way, you know, pipes aren't as big as they need to be now. And there's been some occurrences of flooding, not just on the road, but off-site because of the way the drainage system works. And the other area is Linwood Street, kind of the Linwood Church Street area. So we completed those drainage studies, and so we had kind of a, we'll say, a preliminary marching set of orders on what we need to do. And we went through a capital planning process to get monies to help supplement the design of those two locations. Again, we, you know, we have some limitations on the amount of funding we get from our Chapter 90 program, which is, people hear us talk about Chapter 90, and those funds come from the state, and those are what we primarily use for road, bridge, drainage, traffic, signals, signage. And that only goes so far. So we went through the capital planning process. From the time we finished the study phase, and again, it was just that, it was a planning study phase, so we had a budget-level estimate. By the time we, so we had this number. We started the design, now we're kind of getting into the last year here. So that, the study was completed, it was last spring, the manager had worked with us, and he put forth an article back last spring for a bond. And again, I'm very fortunate that the, the bond was to address a number of capital needs in the Department of Public Works. This was one of the, one of the many projects. It included design work and construction of various projects. So unfortunately, that was, you know, that was tied to the planning-level estimate, and at and at that time, we were just starting the design of the project. And, you know, as, you know, I'm just, I'm more in tune with this based on my background, but sometimes, I think I had mentioned earlier, you, you know, you have to start digging some holes, and you, you know, once you start, you know, getting more detailed information, you learn more things, and, you know, again, you just, you, you make, when I look at the High Street project as we have it right now, you know, everything from a lot, you know, we were probably a little bit low on some estimates for ledge and rock, High Street, you know, going up High Street, so that increases the cost. And then, again, I, I go back to, unfortunately, the cost of services, the cost of materials, everything has changed, and I'm not talking just, you know, gravel and rock and pipe, I'm like, you know, everything, all building materials, it's, it's really, it's really causing a lot of trouble in, in, you know, in departments like, like ours. So we had this authorization from last spring, and the way it was voted, it listed each project, and it, we had those individual estimates for a total. So in order to do this correctly, because we know that the, the number that we had, and I forget what the number was, approved back in the spring of last year, to what our construction estimate is now, in order for us to be able to, you know, authorize the work or sign a contract to get it going, because we're ready to go to bed. I mean, the design is complete, we're all set and ready to go, but in order for us to, to move the project forward, we have to formally, through town meeting, we have to formally amend that to, you know, to include enough money, which the money that we're asking for is, is money to get us to what we, what we have in our construction estimate, plus some contingency, because you always have to have some contingency in there. And, you know, so we, we, we feel very comfortable with that, that amount of, of the request. So this is, is a, is a correction or a, an amendment, I guess is a good way to say it, to that authorization that we received last, last spring, just to be able to put this out on the street.
Once again, so many steps to get to the, from point A to point B, and this is just one step to move the project forward to get it.
It's a step, means to an end.
Means to an end, very good. Okay. All right, so the last article we're going to discuss today is Article 26, which is the Sutton Street Culvert Replacement Authorization to Acquire Permanent and Temporary Easements.
Sure. And actually, it's a very good segue, because this project was one of the other projects that was on the bond that was approved at the Springtown Meeting last year. And luckily, we, you know, we have enough money in that, that amount that was approved, so we're moving that forward. Actually, we just signed contracts yesterday, so that will be, for the public's benefit, we'll be posting more information up on the website, social media, when that, that's going to actually start. But what we found through this process, I mentioned earlier, just drainage in, in general, the old drainage in town, a lot of it, you know, again, a lot of it's just old legacy, you know, was built back when the town was being built. There weren't these requirements and laws and, and those types of things that, that would, you know, allow you to have this infrastructure on private property. So in general, what we have is, we have an existing couple of pipes that come across Sutton Street, where they end up outside of what we call the right-of-way or the layout of the road, it's basically the property that is owned by the town, right? So anything outside of that is on private property. There are elements of the existing infrastructure at Sutton Street, the end of the pipe, the, we call it the head wall, you know, that the pipes come out of, that infrastructure is actually outside of the right-of-way of the roadway, and there is no historic easement for that. So it, it, you know, it's a correction, we'll say a correction. Again, there's, it's impossible to, to figure out why, you know, things happen, sometimes they were just put in, you know, no ill intent, but in this case, we're doing this work, and we want to make sure that it's, it's done properly, it's available for us in the future to not just construct it, but operate and maintain it, so it has that element to it. So the two things that we're looking for here, well, the crust of the article is an authorization for the Board of Selectmen as road commissioners to negotiate any easements that we need. And so what we're looking at is, we're looking at both permanent, just that, permanent easements, and temporary easements for construction. Permanent being, we're going to need an area outlined around whatever it is that we're talking about to allow us to be able to do what we need to do there now and in the future. And the temporary is just that, they're temporary easements for construction, you know, as you're digging a hole here, you're going to dig it a little bit bigger, and you got to accommodate, you know, that construction effort, so temporary easements. So there's some temporary on both sides, and the permanent easement is on the southern side. So this is a, an authorization for the Board of Selectmen to be able to, you know, to do this once we, you know, get to that point, so.
Great. Well, it sounds like all these projects seem to be, you know, updating older systems, correcting problems that have been building up for so many years and so on and so on. So it's, it's very important, you know, to get the information out and so on. How, how do people find out more about these projects?
Tune into the Board of Selectmen meetings, you know, I, I do have my moments where I'd like to go in more often, and then I have my moments where I don't want to go in as frequently. But, I mean, if there, we try to balance that a little bit, and obviously, the board, they're very interested in project updates, and there's a lot going on, like, you know, right now, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, which are then going to translate into construction projects than everybody's going to really see. But as far as information, we do through the Board of Selectmen, you know, I do go in probably month, every month and a half at least, and, and try to do, especially during the construction season, to give project updates. I also put that information, it's a very simple, almost bulleted list of projects with some general milestone dates for all public works projects, not just highway, some stormwater, water sewer, et cetera. And we post that up on the webpage. I try to, I try to put it in one location, which would be on the Public Works webpage, and then I, I share it out to different locations, like, well, when something like that gets posted, I'll put it through news and announcements, so at least that kind of ties back. We'll put information out and link it to social media, Facebook. We are also in the process, on the Public Works page, developing another page that is gonna, it's intended to provide more detail than that bulleted list. So if you were, and right now, it says it's under construction, but you can go into it, and when you go into it, you'll see, it's just kind of a free-form page, it'll start with highway, and it'll list design projects and construction projects. As, as I keep building it, we're going to turn, there are some hyperlinks in there to be able to refer you to, say, the Linwood Drainage Study, you know, while it's not in construction yet, but here's the, here's what we've done to date, so if people are interested. And then as we get into, say, the construction, we're developing kind of a, a one-sheet project update form that, well, you know, it shouldn't be more than a page or two, but it'll have like project background and, you know, what we're, you know, what's been going on since the last update, and contact information from us at the DPW, who our contractor is, who our, our engineer, who they are, and just, you know, any other notable things. And, you know, like, I just put one up on the Route 122 Water Main project that we're doing, had just a project locust sketch in there, and it kind of had a little too weak look ahead. So that's in development, but it is being used right now, so that would, that's the primary location. Outside of that, you know, we're trying to supplement as much as we can with variable message boards, you know, social media is great, you know, because once, you know, once you get it in one location, definitely within the town pages, it gets shared along, so, you know, the, the reach does get out there, and, well, you know, there's always room for improvement, but we're, we're, we're working on, you know, getting more and more information to hopefully answer those questions that people tend to have, and, so, yeah, start with the website.
And you mean the town website?
The town website, yes, sorry about that. And, you know, more specifically, I mean, go right to the Public Works page. And worst-case scenario, give us a call, I can't stress that enough either, I mean, there tends to be a lot of discussion through social media, but we don't necessarily get, you know, I'm not monitoring social media to that end. And, and for me, to be honest, in the department, our, you know, our social media presence is really intended to be kind of a, one direction, you know.
Get the information.
Get the information out.
And everything else, not to debate or argue or discuss, yeah.
So always, yeah, if you, if you have any questions, feel free to give us a call. Catch me at Town Hall, I'm at Town Hall, as you know, and I.
Office annex.
Yes. And I have to admit, I, I do enjoy talking to people, I think it's, it's well worth the five, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, if, you know, standing on the steps at Town Hall, you know, one, you're, you're hearing it, like, I'm listening to what you're saying, and, you know, you, they're, they're hearing what, you know, what I have to say in return, may not always see eye to eye, but I think it's, it's helped, you know, give both sides a good mutual understanding of what's going on, or what's happening, or what the situation is. So, yeah, start with the town's website, go right to the DPW page, or if all else fails, give us a call.
Great. And of course, as always, you're more than welcome to come here and talk, maybe we can do some more shows about some of the other projects here we'll be working on, but we'll get through town meeting first.
We'll get through town meeting first. This has been a long time coming.
Yes.
And yes, I think, you know, we have some, we have great staff, and we've, you know, we've, we've been deficient in staff, here's my public service announcement. I think we've, we've come a long way with, with staff hirings and getting up to where I think the department needs to be to do a lot of things, and, you know, we're, we have, we have a, internally, we have a pretty good vision. My, my mantra now is, let's put our money where our mouth is, you know, it's, we've been fortunate to get the support of town meeting in our budgets and some of our road monies that have come through town. Now, you know, now we need, people need to see it happening. While it's been happening, I want to see more, you know, the more you see, you know, the, the highway guys out doing our own projects, the water guys out doing, you know, small things that, you know, normally you wouldn't see, you know, we have staff now that we can, we can do that. So the more that people see it, I think the better support we get for, you know, articles like this, and it just, I think it helps all, all around.
Yeah, great. Well, Ben, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For finally joining me here on the show.
Yes, it's been a long time, like I said.
And so, and once again, you always have a open-door policy here, so you're more than welcome to come back and, and discuss more projects, okay? Well, thank you very much for watching this episode of FYI Uxbridge. Once again, reminder about Springtown Meeting, which is May 14th at 7:00 PM at The Valley Chapel on 14 Hunter Road here in Uxbridge. Please come out and vote for our town budget, other articles, help support the town and their projects, and so on. If you have any questions or are, know anybody that's interested in coming onto the show, you can reach me at my email address, which is B. Giles, G.I.L.E.S., at uxbridge-ma.gov, or you can go to the town website, which is uxbridge-ma.gov, to get more information about what's going on in town, what's going on with the town warrant, and you can also look up more information, contact information from myself. Thank you very, thank you very much for watching.